This conference will now be recorded.
Think that was funny, I have a.
Yeah, I do.
All right, well. Here we go. We'll call to order the meeting at five oh three P M. Uh, this is monetary select board on March fourth. And we have all three members of board present here in town hall. Okay, and we're gonna get right into the annual town report. Just the select board version, so it's, I would say it's. Uh, short and sweet.
Did you write this or been?
I did. I just took last year's kind of uh.
Updated.
Updated it and. It's hard thinking through fiscal year. Terms of.
Yes. What happened?
Some things spill over fiscal years too. Well, I think it's all factual information. I mean, there are areas where we could add, but I think it basically does what it needs to do. That was the fiscal year we negotiated contract with Southern Berkshire Annuance and with the Collins Center. And Roger.
It's always weird because it's so far like some of it seems like it was like.
Oh, my time ago.
Yeah, like, oh my god, that's right, we didn't do this.
Well, you know how I.
You have to go back and look at all the minutes.
I look at all the agendas.
Right.
I don't look at the minutes. I feel crazy. I look at all the agendas, you know, to jog my memory and. Part of the problem is. You know, I was gonna include all the different hires and then it gets to a point where. It's a lot and then who do you include or not include and then that. I aired on the side of not. Probably about many specific. Hires.
Yep.
Because I don't wanna.
Yeah, no, I don't think you need to, yeah.
Make it some but not others. And then basically summarizing town meeting which. Town meeting is its own thing, separate from the select board, but we signed the warrant, so our warrant. Feels appropriate. Mentioned a lot of the ongoing. The Renewable Energy Working Group, like Carfield Working Group, some of the grants that are. Either were completed or ongoing.
I have one stupid little thing, which is.
Nothing stupid.
Um, well, okay.
Well, something.
Oh. Uh, in, in the second to last paragraph, there are many ongoing projects.
Yeah.
It says, it should read that the board oversaw, not that the board is oversaw.
Perfect, yeah. That's a good catch.
I mean, I could, I don't think it's worth going, my going through all the agendas to see, oh, well, what about this?
Yeah.
Like, no, not gonna do it, it's nothing there, exactly.
Well, and there are things that we worked on and didn't wrap up and, I mean, the list of things that were we. You looked into and there are progress.
The human laws, that's right. It's not. It's not worth saying, we've been working on the personnel manual for two years.
It's too depressing.
Yes, but.
It's.
I'm starting to get the, I don't like the existing personnel manual better than this stupid individual. It's just so unreal with all those separate policies.
I like how we can just add and.
Yes.
Update individual policies though as laws and expectations change, I do like that part.
I suppose also if we had them bound and had a, a table of contents in the beginning that just sent you to a page. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, or similar in one, instead of having them all separate, we have to click on them separately if they.
That is the part. But it also, in other ways, it's ni- it's manageable because you can just. If you, if you have a question about vacation, you just go right there, like, do you have a question about?
That's fair.
Bereavement.
It's right there, right there, one page.
Okay, I, I see your point, I don't know, I see advantages to both.
I think we're gonna use the best we've, I think we have the most momentum we've had in a long time.
Well, there's no question. That, that was the only thing, um, I'm gonna say.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and there will be in hopefully a week or so. A full town report, the last kind of edits are, are tripping me. Without further ado, we'll jump right into personal policies.
There were only three.
Oh, strictly, no.
Yeah.
Just random little updates, uh. I got back to Q and A pilot, I haven't heard anything.
Oh. Okay.
Just so that.
Right.
It's out there. Oh, we'll have the, the joint meeting with the planning board.
Yeah, thirteen.
And I'm just waiting to hear from them if they wanna do it.
Well, second Thursday, so that's next week.
I think it's next Thursday.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear if they wanna do it in, in town hall with go to meeting.
The planning board.
Or teams or whatever they do.
I think they do, uh, Zoom.
Do they, I thought they were doing team.
Uh, I can't remember now.
Microsoft Teams, I think.
Well, I'll figure it out, we'll post an agenda.
Yeah. You can always just copy paste.
So it's their Thursday night meeting, the thirteenth, which is next week.
Yeah, so we meet twice next week.
It's seven, right?
Yeah, only three times. Yeah.
Are you doing another work you need to do?
Yeah. Hey, did you ever reach out and find out if you're allowed to come?
I did not, no.
Please do. This is like.
I can try, but.
Do you, do you want me to, do you want us to get a little, some of this part today?
Not who's gone off the rails, but, um, you were talking about, um, your personal policies, yeah, and they brought kinds of names.
Or should we give a personal policy? Okay, so I have the whole list, remind me what's the first one is, is the.
Court civic duty.
Court civic duty, okay, thank you.
And, you know, I, I have really need one or two comments on each at most.
That's probably, that's the same.
Okay, so, yeah, let's do it, is this what, do I have your manual in mind?
I just, I just wanna make sure, I, I understand that if we pay somebody full time, we pay somebody their regular time. And they get money for being there, the fifty dollars, whatever it is they get, we have to get the, we have to take the fifty dollars from them.
If they, if they were on pay, a paid day.
That would, that wouldn't really happen because they just basically turn it down. They would turn it down if they know they're gonna pay more here, I mean, we have weeks to. There's a week, a week or two of delayed payroll.
Right.
So if they were to say, I'm gonna take money from the jury duty. And then put down, they'd have to put down in their own payroll, all by the town.
Yeah.
That really wouldn't happen.
It's all, it's just like, it's, it's kinda weird, but.
Yeah.
It kinda, it's in there, but, you know, they, it's gonna be.
They can get paid either way, they just can't get both.
Yes, well, yeah.
So, I think I sent these out, right?
Yeah.
So, what, where, would any, does anybody have any actual changes we wanna start at the beginning and go through with?
Yeah, I, I'll start on the, right under policies.
Yep.
We have employees are entitled, I said employees are eligible. That's, people that are down, I can pass it down to the.
Eligible or entitled, you don't have to, I can spell one word, does anybody have an opinion on entitled or eligible? It would be eligible for instead of entitled to, but, you have, do you care? Why?
I don't know, just, I didn't, I didn't like the word, um, entitled.
Entitled? You don't like entitled?
Yeah.
I mean, but basically they are.
I'm entitled.
Well, they kinda have to allow them to leave for two or three days, right, so.
Well, I know you, you know, it makes them eligible. Doesn't make them entitled, makes them eligible.
Actually, it does, eligible means you have, eligible implies you have to ask to get it. Entitled means you can go and we have to abide by it. And that's actually the case, right? It's required of us to do that. It's not something we're being kind enough to grant them.
Right.
So I think entitled to should stay.
Okay.
Next, I, so appointing authority is now for immediate supervisor.
Yeah, so I just.
For your.
I just said the employees. Immediate. Supervisor.
Shall require, that the employee provide? So this is the appointing authority or the employees.
Well, the appointing authority or the employees, your, I just was getting rid of the your.
Ah, or the employees, gotcha. The employees.
So, I think.
Okay.
I think we're only, we only have to pay for three days.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But then that's when they start paying. Because actually jury duty, they don't start paying until two days in.
Well, if you're, if you're. But mostly, I don't know, I haven't been to jury duty in a long time, but.
I never, I get called and then they, they say it, that I don't think they.
I went, I went there for a day and I didn't do anything and they let me go, but if you're, if you're seated.
Yeah, I did that one.
And actually have to sit on a jury, sometimes that jury lasts one day unless it happens to be, you know.
One day or one trial.
So it could be one trial that lasts, but I think it's only. We're only required to pay them for three days.
That's what AI says.
That's what AI says.
After that, the state pays your fifty dollar.
We're worried about compensation for jury.
Fifty dollars, can you imagine, that could be a huge loss of income for someone.
Working Massachusetts, yeah, this is, this is off, this is off a state, this is off a state website. If you work in Massachusetts as a full time, hard time, temporary or casual employee, your employer must pay you your regular wages for any work missed. For the first three days of your service, after the third day, the state, the jury may comp, the, the court may compensate jurors at the rate of fifty dollars per day. If your company is willing to pay you for your additional days of service, they can require you to turn over your state compensation as a condition of paying you, that's kinda. I remember, I remember some stuff about paying you.
So, how do we fix this?
I don't know if we have to fix anything, I think what we're saying is that because we're a government organization, we promote civic responsibility. If you have to put a jury.
So, we just, we only have to do three, but, right.
We'll pay you, we'll pay you.
Right, okay, so employee receipts, so.
I think that's how I'm gonna do it.
Immediate supervisor, we changed. The next thing I have, um, oh, I need a change in said civic duty leave will not be granted to an employee instead of paid to an employee. Um, who is subpoenaed to appear by a party other than a city, town, county, Commonwealth or federal government. So I just changed the word paid to, to granted to. Anybody care? I, I can change it back, I don't care. The employee must use his or her community time or request a leave of absence for this purpose. Not sure what I changed because it's not showing that I deleted anything. But they're blue, purple, all the same, I don't know, all right, anybody else got anything else? So.
The jur- last jury duty I got called to was gonna be. Two weeks because a woman, uh, tripped and broke her ankle at a, uh, bed and breakfast.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I scheduled it so that I had a week off of college and then. And then we found out it was gonna be two weeks about this spring dangle where broke ankle. And I told the judge, I said, you know, I scheduled this so that I'd be able to come for a week, but I have to go back to Worcester and go back to class on, on next week. And he said, well, look at me, and I skipped all kinds of classes and look at where I ended up. And then he said, oh, wait, maybe that's a good point.
Oh my god, I gotta say, like, I just, this, this trend of like, other people when you mess up, like, watch where you're stepping.
There's insufficient lighting.
Oh, oh no.
How do you define insufficient for?
I don't know.
Yeah, right, it wasn't a floodlight, yeah, great.
That's what we, that's what we're gonna do for two weeks, so.
Okay, so we date adopted.
Approved.
Uh, we don't have a date approved, we do. And it's three, four, twenty five, is that correct?
Yes.
It's important that someone check it, is it, today is the fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, file.
Criminal and sexual offenders' records, information core and sorry.
All right, what we got?
I don't have anything.
Me neither, not a senior?
Discipline.
Does it save that? Sorry.
Wrong discipline? I switched it to the town uses a progressive discipline policy.
Yeah.
Uh, tell me which line.
That's right, right under general discipline policy.
General, this, the town's disciplinary toward progressive discipline.
I just say.
The town uses. Uh, uses a progressive disciplinary policy. Okay.
Um, like, two paragraphs after that, beginning discipline such as verbal and written reprimands.
Discipline with a verbal or, yeah?
Um, it's, it kinda said verbal reprimands will be in, in the employee's personnel file. So you just talked it in the file.
Yeah, I bet you.
I thought a record of both verbal and written reprimands.
That's good, that's, that's.
I like it, for record, it's third paragraph under general discipline policy.
Oh, okay.
Uh, second sentence, a record of. Both verbal and written reprimands will be included in the vice personnel file, very good catch.
Unless we want, I mean, it's Massachusetts, you could ask them for consent.
To record.
And record it.
Audio tape it and put them, a USB in.
No. This is not a good idea. All right, accept, accept. Accept, accept, all right, what else?
That's all.
I had some questions on the back page.
Yeah.
One, it says possession of a weapon not required by duties, suppose they were carrying a gun in the car. It's on, uh, town property.
That would be a we- oh, you mean, they're not, we actually have a gun policy?
Well, since we're here.
So the police are allowed to carry guns?
I thought we decided.
We talked about.
You're allowed to carry guns as long as you do it legally.
Transportation, yeah, that's a licensed period.
Where's your weapon not required?
It's under the last, all the different violation of town policies through, uh, fifteen.
It's towards the bottom.
Yeah.
It's a fourth.
Possession of, after gambling.
Yes, and the fourth.
Yeah, but is gambling legal in Massachusetts?
Yeah, well, I'm due.
Well, a lot of things are legal, it's legal with smother cigarette, but you can't do it.
I bet it's weird, gambling's weird though, so like, it's illegal in a casino, but it's still illegal to have our, like, money poker thing, everybody does it anymore. But it's still illegal, I believe it's still illegal, if you're not like a licensed casino or a licensed fly.
Well, that makes sense.
I, I guess, I guess that possession of a weapon not required by duties, if you include it with the sentence that says commission of any of the following acts by employee. While performing town duties, may result, so if I was sitting in the front end loader and I had. I was in possession of a weapon in the front end loader doing the work, then that would result in disciplinary action. But if I have a license to carry and the weapon is in my trunk and I drive it into the parking lot, that doesn't, that's not a disciplinary action.
No, that wouldn't trigger that.
I think that, I think that might be what it's about, like.
I don't know if there's a better way to word it though. Cause it's illegal.
Does it say weapon not required by? Except it's under commission of any fine acts while performing town duties, so who would be performing town duties in their own vehicle?
Well, with the gun policy, didn't we, well.
Where is it?
Firefighters on the way to a call. Right?
Okay. Under G.
I mean, if we wanna get technical about it, didn't we go, oh, you're looking at.
Really? Under G, huh? No, I've seen it.
Or W, so I mean, that's, that, I guess.
Ways, whistleblower, vacation, where is it? We used to have one. Okay, besides weapon or gun, what would be under?
Firearms.
Eh, nope.
So you have to kinda, you have to kinda think of it. Each one of those and put it in front of the word by, so possession of a weapon not required by duties. But by an employee while performing town duties, so it's like possession of an employee by an employee while performing town duties.
It's just, this is the kinda thing like A C L U and, and N R A, they're watchdog organizations for any missteps by organizations, disciplining for. Things like this, so that, I think we just wanna get the wording right.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to find where the actual H R, that hand, maybe it's on your handbook. Personnel policy, moderate, okay. I don't think so. Cause my life cannot be. All right, I'm just gonna see here if we had anywhere in here. What, should I find gun, weapon? Let's try gun. Gun's not in there, about weapon.
I also feel like we talked about the gun policy.
We talked about it before.
Didn't we get?
It's not in the whole, it's not in the whole manual that, uh. S A B A, that we worked through with S A B A, it's not, neither weapon or gun is even listed in here.
The select board discussed policies and procedures and talked about viability, should an individual be in possession of a gun on town property? Ooh, I'm seeing in the minutes about Concom members, I heard from Noel today that they might have the seven.
Oh, wow.
So this has us talking about it, but never.
Covering employees carrying a firearm for security purposes. That's the whole, and then, so I tried gun, weapon and firearm in the old manual to see if it had any mention of it in there.
And I looked at the whole town website, which has all the select board minutes and gun in one line.
Tried weapon. It says, where you're gonna have weapon, firearm, gun.
That's about it.
That's all I got.
I mean, also, at the point at which someone's doing something illegal with a gun. That's a criminal matter, which I feel would be covered.
I know.
Something here. That's on the Dropbox that was being used to hold this stuff, there's something called weapon free workplace policy.
I bet, do you wanna know what? I bet it's an insurance thing.
I don't know exactly where it is.
I, I bet that Maya wanted us to do it, I mean, there was some reason we were even considering it, I don't think it was just a reconsideration of that H R policy. Because it's, the way he worded that, doesn't that sound like an insurance based thing?
Yeah, I'd have to find it, I'm not quite certain exactly where it is on the Dropbox.
So do you want me to raise that issue with?
Well, let's look, uh, stealing. Is there something against doing illegal?
Just gazing and legal activities in general?
Work discipline.
That, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Uh.
I don't. In this discipline policy?
Gaging inside, gaging unprofessional conduct, safety rules, unsusessances, latent, stupidity and lateness. revealing confidential layers, stealing, theft or misappropriation.
But shouldn't we have a blanket thing, if you're under, if you, if, if you're under investigation for a crime or you're found guilty of a crime?
Actually, there's not a single thing in here that's there.
And there might be a reason why, but.
Yeah?
Maybe the gun thing and. If you're found, I don't know, because, you know, you'll see in the news, someone will be found. You know, they're under investigation for something criminal, so maybe they're put on paid leave. And then, maybe they're found guilty, but sometimes the, the employer does its own investigation.
Yeah, they do their own investigation.
But I don't know if you could just say, look, you were found guilty of a, of a felony charge, so we're firing you for that reason, is that illegal?
Yeah, but I think you go back to here where you talk about their public service and they must behave in a way that does not discredit the town.
Absolutely, I mean, there, there's, you probably broke these other.
Yeah.
But I wonder if it's as simple as saying, in a policy, or if it's illegal, you know, we can fire you if you're found guilty of criminal.
I don't think you can use criminal offense because you, uh, you could use, you could have a civic thing where, you know, a woman's suing you for rape or something, you know. You know, I wouldn't, uh.
Or maybe you go commit a crime on your own time. But be a great employee.
There's probably people that do it.
Okay, here's the question, do we want to run this one by H R?
Yeah, I think so, with the different questions, yeah.
I think you would run. The other question I had on this page is, you know, that you can be impaired by alcohol, if you're reporting to duty impaired by alcohol or drugs. Including prescription drugs, do we do any drug testing? I mean, that'd be.
I think, I think they have random drug testing down at the highway.
Yeah, cause if they're C D L, C D L drivers lots of times have to have.
Well, other than C D L, I don't think they'll do any drug testing, you know.
All right, so what am I asking, H R, do we need a weapons policy?
Yes. Cause we don't know when you can discipline for them, when you can't.
And also.
You can say that they can't break it into the building, but if they're licensed, you can carry it in their car.
Yeah, I'm listening to it.
So do, I'm sorry, do we need a weapons policy and what?
Well, I said, you know, you can, the way I understand, you can say no guns are allowed in here, so that's a rule. But if they're carrying a gun in their car, is that a violation of?
It's their personal rights, as long as that car's not being used for, for town business, yeah.
For town business, sure.
I also don't know if you can say that you can't. Have a gun in town hall, maybe you can.
You can't smoke.
I just don't know, and this is the type of thing there's watchdog organizations that are out there that.
Right.
Will, I think it's just best to ask H R.
H R, so was there, there was a follow up question, so about criminal action?
Yeah, there was a good thing, if, if you're convicted of a criminal action, can you be disciplined if it brings embarrassment to the panel or whatever?
Can that be a reason for discipline?
Right, I'm writing it down, we.
Like that NFL player that was protesting Trump, he got fired for what he did because they said it was bringing too much attention to where he looked.
So for being convicted of crime, you can't be fired for being accused of.
Right. Yeah, but you got the paragraph in there that, you know, that you're, you represent to the town.
I think, but the point is, there may come a day, hopefully never, but there, and this happens, where someone is found guilty of a crime. And then the town may or may not use that as a reason to terminate.
Right.
The person and you don't, we don't wanna be.
We don't, we want, right.
Well, you want it, why, so you have the option of both.
If it's illegal, yeah.
If it's legal, right.
But you gotta make sure that it's worded so you can and you can't.
Right, they have the option.
That's like, when I look at the unfit condition, is how do you determine if they're unfit? If nobody's trained to do it or you don't do it.
So, prefer may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination, so that part would be covered, but we still have to find out if we can and actually legally, you know, do it.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, if someone's found guilty of endangerment. I mean, we said, well, we're a little bit controlled with money there and I'm like, I don't know.
Depends on the job, right, like.
Right, so it depends on the job.
If they're the accountant.
Yes, well, but if they're driving a truck for the, for the P P W, maybe not, right, I don't know. But, yes, what were they accused of, what were they found guilty of, might matter, it might not, I don't know.
I think so, I think that there could be someone that are really good employee in one way and then shop.
Right, no, I know, right.
Well, you got someone that gets in a domestic, this dude gets arrested.
Yeah.
I mean, there's. People who, who get, uh, convicted of.
Bar fights or whatever.
D, you know, D W I. Oh, yeah. Yeah, and they did commit to that and they, they don't get fired for that, you just have to, it could be difficult for their job.
Yeah, yeah.
Their job, they're driving a truck. Well, I mean, you probably, he was in, he or she would lose their C D L driving.
Yeah, but if they're taking minutes, you know, for the parts commission, I get a D W I or O U I, whatever it's called now and.
We're supposed to.
Okay.
Okay.
Call this first.
All right, so we're holding off on approving the discipline policy until we resolve that issue.
Diversity equity inclusion statement.
Okay, this one's around with legislative, except like some fine wording, anything?
And then I, I was gonna do the next to last paragraph, subject to disciplinary action of determination.
Hang on, second date. Uh, okay, give me again.
The second to last paragraph.
Any employee?
No, well, yeah, any employee that's subject to disciplinary action of determination. No, well, yeah, any employee that's subject to disciplinary action of determination.
Sounds interesting.
Uh, he did it better than me, but we're not close.
Okay, so what, what do you have?
I had up to and including termination.
I don't need to, maybe subject to disciplinary action, up to and including termination. Okay? Did I get it right?
Sound good, buddy.
I know, but I kinda put it in the wrong place. These things happen, I don't wanna have to do it again, please.
Put it in the wrong. Oh, the only thing, I'm sorry, um.
That's a thing.
I know, I know in other policies, we were including the select board in like, um.
Behavior.
Yeah, in, in notifying, but I don't know, like that last sentence, it just town administrator, supervisor, or, I know in other places we've done that, but.
So I think.
It's a good question. It was the sexual harassment that.
Oh, yeah.
I think that really rises, I mean, how often is a supervisor, I mean, I guess the same is true here, either involved or a witness, or is kind of conflicted because they're, that person's involved, whereas the town administrator, the select board, you know, is going to go rate down council and dot all the i's and cross all the t's, hopefully. You can always bring something to your direct supervisor, the question is, what do you do if it involves that?
The direct supervisor.
Which is, which is why the town administrator.
It's one of the problems, huh?
That's right.
Yeah, you're working here.
So, I don't, that's a good question, I think it probably, probably how it is. I mean, we can, like, what about an instance where the town administrator is out on medical leave and, you know, the issues with the select board, I, there's always a what if, what if, and I think.
Everyone's all out.
Yeah.
Poor Susan, we could spend a week.
All right, any, so are we changing anything else?
I don't think so.
So basically, that just comes down to up to and including terminate, termination, and that's it. Okay, just double check.
It's, it's, it's a good question. I mean, I think we could basically spell it out, because we have a separate grievance policy, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If any grievance, we don't even really want people bringing it to their direct supervisor, because who knows?
Right.
We have a lot of different direct supervisors that we kinda wanna go straight to the town administrator, and if it's about the town administrator, and the town administrator's not doing it in the select board here.
I guess I'm just trying to be consistent with some, because they're all.
Can we change that, actually? I think that makes sense.
For what?
They're all, they're all.
Why would we change it? Because odds are, if you feel like you've been discriminated against in the workplace, it's probably your direct supervisor.
Or if he's too closely involved, actually, or somebody, I'm sorry, you can't have, in-house people.
So, because bona fide, you know, bona fide, like negative employment action that's taken against you is probably not coming from a peer.
Right, the select board chair is what we're trying to replacing their supervisor.
Should, see, because it's from the town administrator or select board chair.
Yeah, that's probably not comfortable, but.
I, I am as well, and I see your reason.
If you have a payroll question or benefits question, you start with your direct supervisor, they probably take it to the town administrator, because it's all complicated. But this is more like, you're tackling the town.
Yep. All right, so were we approving this one?
Yeah.
All right, approved.
Domestic violence leave. I was happy about both this one and jury duty, that it clarified that if you're the reason for the criminal behavior, that we're not paying you no. Or the, the witness, if you get a call with the witness or.
Uh, anything else?
Um, I probably don't have anything on that.
Okay. Date approved? Today? Nice.
Uh, dress code.
Anything? I, I had no, this one. Um, it is possible, after all this work, that we end up with a fired personnel, we're strapping our, structure policies.
Well, we gotta finish this first, so that.
I know, I know, but I'm just putting it out there that, that, I, you know, just when you think you're out of the water.
Well, you know what? The police have all their own policies, and maybe you just delegate that to a fire chief. Because it's just too much for the select.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
It's just too much for the select board to.
I agree, and plus it's extremely specific, and some of them are just not things that arise in other.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Yes, because of the nature of the work, it's, there's a bunch of things that are different, that I just feel like I'm being clogged with death threats every time.
So, uh, thinking of dress code though, we have a boot stipend for the highway department and maybe other departments, and I just wanna make sure that it makes its way into the manual.
Yes, where should you be?
On the boots.
I'm arguing, I was like, several.
We have a thing about uniforms.
Yeah, maybe, is there, is there a policy about uniforms?
There is. Well, there is a thing that says about dress code, but you don't.
Maybe it's in the dress code policy.
It is not.
You could put it in there.
This is just, you have to wear business casual, they designate which positions which are exempt, to do the nature of the position, and make exceptions through this question. Where, uh, employees are required, this does not apply to employees who require their uniforms or safety attire.
I mean, I think it could be a paragraph in here that if employees in the highway department are entitled to a boot stipend to cover the cost, it's a reimbursement.
I know, but I just worry about the dress code. Would people think they'll look for it in the dress code?
Well, all I know is when I went to look for it this year, when it came up, it wasn't anywhere.
It wasn't anywhere. Um.
Except in the Excel calculations.
And there's no uniform policy. Um. Hey, that's a really good question.
I just made sure.
No, I wanted to be somewhere too, and I just wanted to be able to remind you.
And the other thing is, I don't know if we should have policies about additional stipends, especially for the employees who are hit a regular hourly raise or salary, but then have, there are some stipends involved, like the winter boots policy should probably be somewhere in the holiday winter stipend.
What if we, should we have a, like, a special policies? Policy? Department, uh, applicable departmental policies, and then have it under like.
Well, I, I don't know, I just.
We have to modify it, and I agree, we wanna codify those things, but at the end of the day, we not only have to codify them, we have to make sure that people can find them when they're looking for them, and so the question, I'm making this very clear.
Well, maybe it's highway specific, highway department specific policies, and it's winter road watch, and it's boot stipend, and maybe it's something about their uniforms, and anything else that's specific.
State uniforms, so.
And that, that would work, because if we did that, then we could have fire department specific policies and police departments.
That's right.
Well, and police, what might be good to put down in writing somewhere is the on-call, which a couple. Yeah.
Right, a highway department would be the boots, the winter.
Road watch.
Road watch.
Minimum calling time, which I believe is also in there, but it should be specifically listed.
Yep, minimum calling time, and was there a fourth one?
Um, the winter six-month stipend.
Winter.
That's being six months of the year.
Yep, stipend. One, two, three, four, okay. Okay. Did we, do we have those, any of those in writing somewhere?
Winter road watch is in writing, and I think it's.
Because I remember we actually saw in the.
Sticking on calling time.
Would that, where would it be on the website? Do you have a copy of it? I could probably find it, but if you know where it is, that makes life a lot easier. By the way, did we approve the dress code one?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Eighteen twenty-two.
That's the road watch, right, eighteen twenty-two at this like, right? Okay. And minimum calling time, that was twenty-four? Didn't we change it last year?
Three, uh.
Three?
It was changed to three October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, this, so minimum calling time, oh, and the winter road watch, what about the stipend?
It's also in the same meeting minutes, these are, uh, real treasure troves of meeting minutes, there's like six paragraphs in them.
Okay, all right. Right. And the boots, what, is what, like up to five hundred dollars?
Two, two or two.
Two hundred dollars.
And, uh, I think that's basically.
And it's two hundred dollars, what, every two years, or every year?
Every year. And I think that basically does the job, because some people get three hundred dollar boots, but some people get a hundred eighty dollar boots.
Right. I mean, at some point, they'll have to go up, but you can still get good boots for two hundred bucks, so.
It's a proposal, but there should really be a policy.
They're watching weekends and holidays. Right, okay, so I convert that into a policy. That's the proposal into catch to meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm settling for it.
No problem at all. All right, did we have one rule finished?
Nope.
That was the sixth one? All bands. All right.
Do you, um, Roger, have anything before we, we're gonna be getting to the families committee?
I just wanted to say a couple things, I just wanted to thank Frank Abbott for his help over the past few months with invoices and everything, helping me get that sort of stuff straightened out.
Yes.
Working on, you know, National Grid and X Amp and stuff like that, trying to figure out really good value and that, that sort of stuff. I also want to call out Nancy Cleven, who did a wonderful job to help me actually uh, figure out what was in the filing cabinets.
Nancy, yeah.
She's a, she's a former librarian, and she put together a spreadsheet that takes like every filing cabinet and gives you a general basis of what the filing cabinets and what's in them and all that sort of stuff.
Damn.
She did a great job, um, so I want to thank both of, both of them for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also got an email from Steve Weiss about Stan Ross passing.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess he's on the assessors board, ZBA, I think that's what I, I haven't, I haven't gotten.
I think at some point it's on the.
Maybe it's on the file notes, and then Ken Basford's wife died last Friday.
Oh, really? Oh, didn't hear about that, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, you know, I haven't gotten, I don't know any of, of thing on that, because I haven't seen any obituaries.
Brother on, uh, at the coffee this morning, they were talking about he's gonna be buried Friday.
Oh, yeah, up here, I heard up here.
Gotta put the cemetery out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Do one of them.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know if there's a service for?
When I texted, uh, Steve more about it, he was led to believe there wouldn't be a service, it'd be private.
Okay, I think that sounds right, but.
I'll go and check. Also received a letter today from, um, Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, and, uh, they have, uh, they've been pushing through the, the new, um, chapter ninety monies, and the, the, just, I guess it needs to be, I don't know if the legislation's necessarily passed completely yet, but it's, they, they're upping from two hundred million dollar distribution to five hundred million dollar distribution. Um, so it's a five-year plan or three-year plan, it says one point five billion dollars. So, yeah, so they're increasing it by three hundred million dollars, so it's a five-year plan of putting in an extra one point five billion dollars in a multi-year bond authorization, and our apportionment for fiscal year twenty twenty-six uh, is three hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and one point seven cents.
Three hundred and fifty-six thousand?
Three hundred and fifty-three.
Fifty-three, fifty-three.
How much is it worth before? Is it usually, isn't it about a hundred?
Yeah, it was like a hundred eighty-seven or something, like a hundred and nine, somewhere around there. So, and they're, they're also, they've changed the, uh, I think they changed the calculation for it, and it's, uh, more based on road mileage too, which I don't think it was.
They weren't always based on road miles.
Yeah, there was something different, they changed the equation of it to the.
Maybe they just increased from.
So that puts us around a million dollars in chapter ninety, chapter ninety-nine right now.
Sure, we'll find out.
A little over there, so. Yeah, 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 and, and last on this is, uh, I've been talking, Amanda Leavenworth, the Newtown clerk, has been in house, she's, uh, she was here today, I don't know if she's still here, but, um, she's coming, uh, Thursdays, eight, three to two, Fridays, eight, three to three, has a floater day right now, she's trying to figure out. She is working on the census, and at the same time, working on dog licenses too, which go out at the same time. So I know I've had some people inquire about dog licenses, and, uh, because I guess there's an April first deadline, so if they come after April first, we're not gonna go after you for not paying your four dollars.
We're gonna ship for the dog.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's four dollars, so, you know, you know, if it was forty, maybe, but we might come after you. So I just wanted to let people know that, so, that's it for me.
I quickly don't understand, I'm, so I just, uh, the, the burial is at twelve noon.
On Friday?
On Friday, March seventh, at Coors Share, and then the funeral service will be at about one P M at Monterey Meeting House. If anyone isn't coming to attend.
Um, so, just as an update, Roger and I were both there for a meeting with Chief Ryan Brown from the Lee Fire Department yesterday. Was extremely helpful and informative. Um, he is definitely willing to work with the chief to, on, um, management, planning, and, um, integration, as we come online with whatever plan we come online with. Um, he gave us some really good tips about budgeting issues. Um, what else would you say came out of that meeting? He was very support, not surprisingly perhaps, he was extremely supportive of the plan, and recognizes the need for our transitioning.
Yeah, supportive of the department, the fire department, and its ability to, to support the other community, community itself. Um, yeah, I think it was, it was a lot about scheduling and finance and that, so, yeah, I thought it was a good meeting, thought it came out.
Um, in addition, Roger and I went to meet with Mike Canales, the town administrator in Stockbridge today, to learn more about, um, how we engineered the agreement with West Stockbridge for their joint department, some of the like nuts and bolts of it, of the transition and where they're headed. Um, again, a really interesting meeting. And I think, I feel like, based on our conversation, let me, you can speak for yourself, walking out of there, one of the things we really took out of there is like, they've also transitioned, they've created a five-town building department, for, not DBW, but building department. I think it's West Stockbridge, Stockbridge, Venice, Lee, and Great Barrington are now, have one joint department with a head of the department and several full-time employees that all the towns are paying into, I don't know what the apportionment is. Um, I think they're also, are they bringing on, um, wiring and plumbing too?
Yes, yeah, you talked about that too.
Yeah. Um, it, it might require another town or two. And he's basically saying that, you know, there's no county government, that's not gonna happen, but in the end, you have to treat these things professionally and realize that we need to treat them like a department, not like some weird shared service that, but like, we're creating a department, we're creating a structure. We're leading with that, and we're bringing people online as we can, and if there's enough additional towns that wanted to come in as a group, that would be enough for another position, then buy into that, like, just as a model, I thought it was very interesting, and that's kind of how he's seeing the fire EMS thing. Budgetarily, they're, they were in a, they're kind of in a different position than we, we are. Um, they weren't, they're not really up against a override for the, for what they're doing. Um, their ultimate plan would involve twenty-four seven, the bridge plan involves seven day a week daytime with four people, we don't really, you know, it's ten-hour days, but we really don't know the nuts and bolts of the schedule, and that's a provisional fact that change, they haven't committed to it yet. Um, they definitely are, are thinking that it needs to be a combined fire EMS thing. Um, they definitely are, are thinking that it needs to be a combined fire EMS thing. For one thing, it's clearly indicated for them because they were paying over three hundred fifty thousand dollars between Lennox and Lee. For those services. Um, that makes a big difference in the budgetary gap. But they're committing to buying a half a million dollar ambulance this year. Right, like, so they're, they're going all in. They also, they see themselves becoming an E M T training place. Um, I, I was most impressed by. His idea about creating, um, I'll call it joint departments. Because I don't, it's not regionalization. We've talked about it before. Um, with the idea that at the very least, you have one administrative head. Um, rather than multiple administrative heads. Obviously, in some departments like DBWs, it can be tricky because you're talking about big pieces of equipment. That have to be maintained, it needs maintaining and all the other stuff. But if you look at it as a single department and you're both contributing to that budget. It gives you different options. Um, that brings us to thinking about who we can partner with for some of these things. And what would be involved in that partnership, both from a logistical standpoint. Obviously, with the building department, you have a lot more options, right? Because the person is much more mobile than large pieces of equipment or roads. Um, but.
It was very much about just taking the issue. Just go, don't waste your time.
And.
Go, go and talk to whatever community you want to talk to about what you want to do. You know, on the fireside, you should be in contact with New Marlboro, Sanders Field Office. Just, just go and talk to them. As, you know, myself and Sean, maybe just go talk to them, to the other town administrators, town managers, sit down and say. This is what we need to do and that if we need to take the lead, we need to take the lead, we should take the lead. And say, this is what we're thinking about doing and we need to, we need to know what you think about it. And you could sort of, sort of kind of come with a plan, you know, come with a plan, say, this is what we're thinking of doing. And can you help? Can you be part of it?
It's interesting to me too that they, Stockbridge paid for the Stockbridge Lee, um, GB Associates distribution plan. Basically looking at different plans and where the houses would be and what the service times would be. That, that's really what it covers. Um, and West Stockbridge paid for the Stockbridge-West Stockbridge one. I guess that came in around twenty K. But then, one of the things he said is, do not wait to do anything for another study. Study after study has been being done. And all it does is enter into a door. Because at the end of the day, when people see the price tag associated with it, they shove it in a door and don't do anything. And I, everyone sort of feels like already, that's what happened to the twenty eighteen, nineteen study that they did for regionalization. A lot of people are having personally expressed repeatedly the same concept about the EMS one that's going on now, that I'm participating. Really to at least hear what they're saying, but that's an eighteen-month study. And at the end of the day. There's a significant chance and everyone, everyone's gonna look at the price tag and go, nope. Meanwhile, Eggermont's acting, West Stockbridge and Stockbridge are acting, we're acting because we know that we don't have the volunteer supply. And that it can't really wait for three years or five years.
And our first day is going up and up and up and up and up.
The price tag's not going down.
Like, why are all those?
Yeah.
Right. So I, I think that we need to, I, you know, Roger was willing to start having those meetings. I don't know what it means for our immediate plan. We're, we're still talking about that and.
Yeah.
Um, there's just so many things to consider, but I was both. I was kind of encouraged by his way of looking at the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
He seems to look at it more like, uh, he's looking at it more like you do outside of New York. Where you go and you look at not necessarily a county, but more of like, uh, larger communities combining together. So.
Yeah, the, it was exactly.
And you mentioned Hartford or Hartford, Vermont.
Yep, where it's like White River Junction and Hartford, there's like five towns that have a shared apartment.
Yeah.
So each town maintains their identity and vote representatives that kind of sit on it. I guess like a city council, except it's five towns. Um, that then, that council appoints the town manager, I guess, or whatever. And they treat all five towns or put it into one pot, everyone, yeah.
It's just, yeah, but each town is still individual in its own sense.
Right.
Because it has its own representation.
So it's like a unique county? I don't know, whatever. But it's a, it's a way of getting a larger population and coping with that problem.
Whatever we do will have downsides. I mean, and we'll have yes-buts and all of that. But the idea is, I think that's really good advice, is do something.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a common principle when you're facing a significant challenge. Is don't freeze. It's easy to freeze. It's easy to freeze in our heads. It's easy to freeze in our bodies. Don't freeze. Sometimes doing something's better than just standing in the middle of the road looking at the car coming at you.
Yeah, for sure. And I think it's all, like, I, I do believe that we have to take action now because I think the problem is already there. And I think the difference between that attitude and some of the other towns is. We're not gonna do anything till there's a disaster versus we see the, the, the capacity for the disaster and we want to plan to avoid it. And make decisions ahead of that, so we're being proactive, not reactive. It's gonna carry a price tag whenever you do it. And I think it may be better to begin that process now than to wait. I, I don't think another eighteen months or two years for a study is the right.
The numbers are going up like the way they're going up.
They're doubles every year or, you know, it doesn't take very long to be whatever the price is.
So, anyway, that, that was our meeting. I hope it wasn't boring.
I, I've been thinking about joint, I've been saying county government for years.
Yeah.
On, on different departments. We're very fortunate to have a few long-time departments. It's like, if we didn't have Don doing the building department.
Right.
It'd probably be a revolving door.
Mm-hmm.
And we, that would make a lot of sense. And I think there will be a day.
I mean, I honestly. Yeah, he's gonna retire and I'd like to be thinking five years down the road right now about, ooh. If we wanted to join with them, what other towns could we get on board so there'd be enough of this? He threw, he threw out New Marlboro and Sheffield. I'm like Sheffield, we're gonna get Sheffield on board? I don't, boy, I don't know. I think he's just thinking numbers, like there have to be enough building permits to warrant an additional full-time person.
Well, that doesn't fully make sense to me because what if they have a full-time person who could round out their schedule, who could come on and.
I think the answer is that that's already the case.
They're fully, but at some point, their four people are.
They, to bring on another person, we'll have to have additional.
But at some point, their four people are gonna be so busy, they're gonna get a fifth person, but not fully needed.
Well, they, well, they, oh, yeah, they would wish for, that's why they have to, it's not like you, to their, to his point, it was like, we can't have like.
Right, right.
One town at a time come in. It's more like, these three towns come to a agreement and they're gonna jump in.
And then, right.
And they're, 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 they're.
Exactly that.
They can use a full-time person, then we're gonna pull them in, as long as they're using the same song.
Wanna, you, you wanna, you wanna come to a party, you gotta break friends.
There may come a time where they.
Yes, there may.
Where they need twenty more hours and we can give them.
But maybe, maybe the question is to say, what, how many, how many permit applications a year do you need to warrant additional chapters in?
Mm-hmm.
Um, because then you know.
And the other, the other thing.
Go have a conversation with other towns, how many you got? If, like, do you have enough?
The other thing he said, said too, is that all permits, or on the, on the, the planning of a building, uh, sign, all permits rise to the highest. So our, it's a uniform cost across all communities. So whatever that, whatever that cost is, if our cost, if we have a dollar value that's too low, it rises up to it. So that was one of the things he said. It's just part of the process that we get into.
Yeah, what happens to fee collection?
Well, fee collection is through permits.
And it goes to the town that it came from?
It, uh, well, we're paying an assessment, right, for, for the business.
What happens to the fees that are.
I think.
They've probably collected for them to offset their costs.
We bill, but we, we have more in building fees than we pay in building insurance.
I feel like. Hey, right, and I.
Sorry, we have to figure that out. We get money, it's all part of it. The town makes money in the building department.
I don't, I'm sure it's all part of it. I, I think one of the things he said, like, so I'm not sure how that ends up working because it might come to us and then we pay a assessment. One of the things he said was that people realize they could use the fees to pay. To pay their, what we would owe that department, right, to pay our portion of it.
Yeah.
What you're saying is, right now, we bring in more than we pay and maybe that would still be true. I don't know.
Will it work?
We have to know more about how this system really works, but it's something to consider because at some point, Don is gonna retire. Right? Yeah.
It happens to the best of us.
Ah, and the worst, all of us.
I like retirement. I think work is highly over-regulated.
Is, are we expecting Eileen?
I think not. I think she says you can make it tonight, but I could, oh, maybe not, maybe that's her.
She does have a, she might not be here, I don't know.
Nope. No? Okay.
No, that's not Eileen. Okay, well, let's get started.
All right.
Two, so four with the finance committee. Um, I have not gotten a great chance to look at the budget yet, but. I think one of the ways that we've done this in the past is we just read through the budget and put holds. And come back to the holds. That way we know what the pending discussion items are. At future meetings, we can always come back and place additional holds or resolve. Um, but if we just start at line one hundred and work our way down, sometimes you get caught up. In the first couple of items and miss out on the big picture. So maybe if there's, if that's okay with everybody. We'll just read down and kind of like it's a town meeting and you put a hold. Does that work?
Yep.
So, um.
Who's keeping track of the hold? It, what are, by the way, what are the yellow and there was another color?
Okay, so, um, so, so the yellows are ones that right now aren't connected to a, um, a spreadsheet yet. So I just, I, because I hadn't gotten to it, so I just put the same number that was in there from the previous year.
Okay.
So, and, um, the other colors are, so, the, some of the colors here right now are more just for me as noticeable. So like, as I scroll down, the blue color, I'm trying to make sure that all the numbers are matching right now. And for example, that subtotal doesn't necessarily, it's off by a few dollars, doesn't necessarily match what was on the warrant if you look at it. So just, it's off by like, we're like, four dollars or something like that.
Sometimes it's a few cents. Yeah, it's fun.
Yes. I don't want to drive myself crazy, uh, you know, over like.
But it's gotta be, it's gotta match last year's warrant.
Yes, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at right now, is so that it matches last year's warrant.
That's.
These little orange ones here are ones that I haven't received yet. So for example, um, this is education. I haven't received it. Uh, for, just to kind of put a number in there, um, to, I guess, scarce or not scarce, I put ten percent in. For, uh, the schools operating in transportation, just to put it in there. I know like our, our health insurance went up twelve percent. You can only imagine theirs is going up twelve, fourteen, fifteen percent as well. They have a much larger, um, much larger, uh, number of employees, plus they have four, um, unions are negotiating right now. So all at the same time. So all this is kind of happening. So who knows what that number will be. And so the same thing again, this one ninety-nine, oh seventy-three is like off by like, I don't know, four dollars or something like that. But yet this one was, was just right. Um, the purple, so this is another one. I just kind of put some numbers in for transportation, for transportation. I was still just trying to work out some numbers for, um, for hauling and because the hauling thing go up. So I just want to make sure I have my numbers right. I've been working on that, just that.
So it's a provisional number and you're not certain, right, you got it?
Purple, but purple are, um, are a little more, th- th- those purple ones are, um. Departments that are actively looking to increase their, um, either their, their hours or their wages. A percentage higher than what we will be looking at as a COLA. So for example, I haven't put in the Council on Aging's outreach coordinator wages yet. But they're looking for some more hours and bringing the, bringing the dollar value up to twenty-two dollars an hour, which is more than the three percent COLA that we're talking about. And the community center wages are actually accurate. But again, that's another department that is looking to increase potential hours. As well as the wages more than what the, um, more than what the, um, COLA is. And the Lake Garfield expenses, uh, on the operating piece is, is just new. And I just, I know we, we had thoughts about, um, we had thoughts about bringing that in as an operating budget. But, um, and we might have to think twice about that this year.
It's interesting that we talked about having two pieces. Because one piece is a consulting, one time consulting thing going on. And then there was the ongoing scuba diving. But, you know, of that budget, two big things that are.
Well, they have, they have, they have two big things that are ongoing right now. So they have, they have the one big thing that's ongoing, which is the, the dash, which is the diver system, um.
And that's gonna be a part of.
That, that's, that, that.
See, that makes sense to be, yeah, up there, but then the consulting piece sounded like.
The consulting piece, from my understanding, that, that's, well, that is the, well, there's the, the piece about the, um, the, um, the environmental scientists. They have, that, that's another piece that they have in there. And so they're, they are.
So that's an add-on. Then, then, then the, their consultant wants those, while the drawdown was gonna go looking for overflowing septic. And that was gonna be as, that was something else, if I remember, because I said in the meeting when they presented Roger.
Yeah, let me just double check and see, because I.
There was another piece that, uh, that they want, that, the consultant was recommending.
Right.
They, they look for potential overflow pollution problems, so, and I thought that was.
I think I tend to agree with your sentiment that if it's going to be a one-time study.
Yeah.
Or project, that it will be a special article.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really, we want to keep, you know, oh, boy, I put an end to the budget here, we're here, very, very main special articles, as long as I can pass.
I know, I get those, this one. At the same time, a little worried about having to go to an override just for budget reasons.
So, so this is how they broke down their, their largest number, which was eighty-four thousand dollars. They broke it down as the late scientists collecting data, the, the, uh, seventy thousand dollars for dash, the drawdown N O I. And water monitoring. So that's kind of how they broke down their services. Um, that, that was at eighty-four thousand dollars, so.
What did they spend last year on the dash? What in that part of the budget?
Uh, it ended up, well, they haven't completed their dash, the dash yet, so, but they had sixty thousand, they pretty much used all that. I don't know where they're gonna get the rest of it. For, for dash, so that's how that works.
Actually, it was a contract that was renewed.
Was, well, there, there was for the.
The school divers had a three-year contract and the day you renew.
And it's got to be a real track, yeah. Yeah. And so the way, the way that I have this set up now, just in case I, I don't know, just to let you know. Um, I have the one large budget. It's called this, uh, well, F by twenty-five working budget. And, um, then I, I, uh, in the background, you can see here, if I click on one of these things here. It actually has the, the, um, spreadsheet that it goes to, which is in this folder called requests. And so you can click down in there and you can actually see the background information from where it comes from. So like, for example, you know, if you wanted to see the, uh, you know, the tax, the town clerk, you would come in here and you could unmix the.
Tiny, it's tiny.
But it's got all the information that was collected during the, um, during the, um, the conversations, the meetings. Anything that is highlighted in yellow, that's actually the, the spot that's being pulled over into this, this specific, specific one. So that's kind of how that's working.
I'm really impressed, Roger, with what you've adapted with this new program. I'm really impressed. When you showed it to us a month ago, it wasn't that long ago, was it?
Yeah.
I said, oh my God, this is gonna take.
Well, especially what he started, what, what he had to work with. You know, it's a huge.
It's not like this is gonna take Roger years to get up to speed on how to use it. Here you are flipping through it.
Well, this is a little different than that thing now, but yeah, this is a little different. It isn't the same thing.
I'm impressed, I'm impressed.
So, yeah, so to, uh, get back to big picture.
Yep.
If we read through, maybe we can flag the holds, uh, Roger.
Yep.
Could you highlight maybe the name of the line?
Yeah, sure.
Put a hold on moderator. That way the numbers will change, but.
Yep.
We'll keep it highlighted until at a joint meeting.
Yep.
We resolve it.
Sure. I'll do that.
So I'll read it. You can yell holds. We're not gonna stop and discuss it right then.
Yep.
We'll go back to it. Um, we'll get right into it.
Sure.
Moderator, four oh. Moderator four oh two fifty-one.
So just, I'm sorry, reading forward, though, the, um, wherever it's a wage, it's pulling, it's pulling from a, uh, it's pulling from, it's pulling from that, that one spreadsheet you looked at before, which was the budget personnel cost analysis, which right now, we're basically sticking with a one point zero three percent. There are a couple oddballs down through here that are ones because they're just dollars. And there may be one that I actually put in a physical, like this one here, uh, the, for the community center wage, I put in a physical dollar. So if you wanna have, if you have a question about a wage, we just have to go to a different spot.
And a hold, we just have a question.
Yeah, people, we were not asking, we're just saying which line we do wanna flag about that, okay.
It could be, uh, you know, I thought we were gonna go higher, or it could be lesser, we should defund the one entirely.
Roger.
Uh, moderator four oh two fifty-one. Constable one, office assistant wages sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-three thirty-eight. I think I'll put a hold on that, Roger.
Which one?
Office assistant wages.
Okay.
Um. What's it?
Wait, cause wages are expensive, cause you're gonna.
Wages. Office assistant expenses two fifty, select board elected stipend seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-three forty-four. Select board expenses seven thousand two twenty. Uh, grant writing wages seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Let me collapse these two, which will make it a lot easier for me. Oh, I can't do that. Never mind. Uh, grant writing expenses two fifty, town administrator wages eighty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-one eighty-five. Town administrator expenses three thousand, finance committee clerk one dollar, finance committee expenses five hundred, town reserve fund thirty thousand, town accountant services.
Hold that, the reserve fund.
Yeah. Um, town accountant services forty thousand eight hundred, town accountant expenses.
It actually says town account, is that supposed to be town accountant?
Town, town account, oh, town accountant expenses.
Right.
Town accountant expenses twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty.
I still do wanna hold that, yeah.
Um, principal assessor wage is fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty-one oh three. Assessor's clerk wage is twelve thousand three hundred and one twenty.
I don't think, um, it's like I didn't believe that somewhere.
Hold, yeah. Assistant to the principal assessor one dollar. Assessor's elected stipend five thousand six hundred and one thirty. Assessor's expenses thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine.
Can we hold that one?
Hold. Treasurer services forty thousand nine fifty. Treasurer expenses seven thousand six hundred. Actually, we should hold treasurer services and accountant services.
You wanna hold treasurer services and accountant services?
Um. Tax collector elected stipend twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight sixty-five. Tax collector expenses fourteen thousand eight hundred, legal fees and expenses twenty-one thousand five hundred, human resources consulting eleven thousand.
I think I, I don't know if you wanna put a hold on that, just to have a conversation about that.
Uh, meeting warrants, printing and postage three thousand. Broadband services, town hall, two thousand, hold. IT expenses twenty-eight thousand, hold. Tax title legal services twenty-five hundred. Town clerk wages twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven oh eight. Hold. Town clerk expenses eight thousand one hundred and ten. Election worker wages is six thousand six hundred and twenty-seven oh two, hold. Election expenses three thousand three hundred and fifty, hold. Census expenses seven hundred and fifty. Con-con agent wages.
Should we put a hold on that? I'm sorry.
You're putting a hold on the agent wages?
Yeah.
Okay. Con-con expenses fifteen hundred.
Expenses is elder.
Expenses.
Expenses.
Um, planning board expenses four thousand one hundred and seventy-nine forty. Board of appeals clerk one dollar, board of appeals expenses a hundred dollars. Town offices expenses thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty. Town report expenses one thousand two hundred. Current police chief salary, we can delete current, that was during the transition.
Okay, yeah.
Ninety-four thousand.
Hold on that.
Ninety-four thousand six ten ninety-four, hold.
Uh, she, or the officer, which one were you on?
Well, we, well, let's do both officers.
Yeah, I think both officers, yeah, all three, that was like, um, yeah.
Full-time overtime wages fifty-six thousand one oh five seventeen. I think you.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna need to hold that too, because if, if we're changing wages of full-time officers and then they work overtime. For overtime, it's gonna be affected too. Police expenses forty-five thousand one hundred, fire department compensation is in there right now with a placeholder of three hundred thousand.
Should we have a hold on that one?
Hold. Fire department expenses eighty-three thousand eight hundred, fire facilities lease sixty thousand. Fire inspector stipend three thousand seven hundred and sixty-three forty-four.
I'll put that on hold, just stipend.
Because if we are a full time, then it goes away anyway, but it's dependent on that for yourself.
Berkshire County Sheriff Communication twelve thousand two thirteen fifty-one, hold.
Yeah, because that's going away too.
Building inspector wage is forty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three eighty-nine. Alternate building inspector wage is one thousand and thirty.
I, I'm gonna put a hold on that, cause I know it's only thirty dollars, but. It sounds like it's been used in a long time.
Building inspector expenses nine thousand one hundred and thirty-two. Plumbing gas inspector expenses a hundred, wiring inspector expenses a hundred. SBREPCA assessment, five hundred.
I'm gonna change that.
Animal control dog officer wage is one dollar, animal control expenses five hundred dollars. Animal inspector stipend six hundred and forty-two seventy-two. Tree warden stipend four thousand two hundred and eighty-four, tree warden expenses fifty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six forty-eight, hold.
Yeah, that's it. I was gonna do the same, just say which, which ones we overlap it, which ones.
School committee stipend one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine eighty-seven, the schools are all, the rest of the schools is all on hold.
Can't even comment on it, cause he's gone, oh, good, yeah.
I'm just gonna do that.
Those are preliminary numbers?
No, they're just ten percent.
No, well, the, uh, the only one that's, I put ten percent on was the operating budget, because it's such a big number, so, the other ones are just one to one.
Capital probably won't change it.
Minorly, sometimes they try to make the principal and interest the same every year, but there's.
It's like, it's like pennies or dollars, dollars, not thousands, so.
Director of operations salary eighty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine oh nine.
I'll put that on hold.
Foreman wage is sixty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three thirty, highway two wages sixty-one thousand five hundred and eight thirty. Highway three wage is fifty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-one sixty-four, highway four wages forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine ninety-eight. Temporary highway employee one dollar. Highway overtime, not winter, two thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
I, I know why, but it's still funny.
Yeah, highway expenses two hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred. Highway road maintenance one hundred and forty-two thousand, snow and ice.
Put that on hold.
Put that on hold. Snow and ice, salt and sand, winter overtime, one hundred and eighty thousand, hold. Public lighting four thousand four hundred, fuel sixty thousand.
Fuel really not a lot.
Well, we were at thirty thousand forever, and we, every year.
Well, we got caught a couple of years ago.
Transfer.
Just hold that up, just, uh, for the next week, I don't hold on it.
Put a hold on that one and not have a conversation now.
Okay.
Dam inspection and maintenance five thousand. Transfer station full-time employee wage is forty-one thousand one hundred and forty-eight forty-one. Transfer station operations a hundred and thirty-five thousand eight twenty forty-nine, hold. Group purchasing regional twenty-five hundred. Hold.
I wanted to start talking about it.
I get you, I know, it's so hard to learn, it's not.
Cemetery expenses twenty-three thousand seven hundred. Um. Sanitary inspector wage is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. Board of health elected stipend one thousand two hundred and eighty-five forty-four, board of health expenses five thousand and twenty-two. Counts on aging outreach coordinator wages, hold. Counts on aging expenses four thousand four hundred and twenty-two. Veterans assessment eight thousand two hundred and seventy-seven five, veterans benefit five thousand. Library wage is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine seventy-five.
Question, sort of, I, I don't wanna put a hold on it, Roger, can you confirm that's the same number we sent you?
I will, I can't confirm right now, but.
Alright, so, because I didn't get a chance to look at them before he left today, I wasn't home.
Member of the public, hold, light green.
I'll change it to green, how's that? How's that?
And the same, and the same for the expenses.
Okay.
I can look at it, I can pull it tomorrow, let you know.
Sorry, why are some of them light green?
Well, that's, uh, that's because, uh, a citizen asked.
Okay, thanks.
Parks beach monitor wages three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven seventy-eight, hold. Parks expenses seventy-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven, hold. Community center wages seventeen thousand six eighty-eight.
There's a hold.
Hold. Community center expenses twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight, hold. Lake Garfield expenses eight, eighty-seven thousand five hundred, hold. Memorial Day expenses two thousand, hold.
So, as I scroll down, there's the debt service.
Well, don't forget memorial day, hold.
Oh, you were in memorial day? Oh, did you? Okay. So there's, uh, there's one number I gotta figure out, because this sixty-six, six, sixty-seven wasn't, it was. I can't remember what that was.
What's the problem?
It did, it didn't match what was in on the, um, warrant, I don't think so.
Well, we had it on two places in the warrant, it's a special article plus the other one.
Yeah, that's why I think it needs to be worked out, I'll figure it out. So that, that's actually the one number that's kind of thrown.
So did Sarah get you, um, so we're holding the library ban, cause the goal is to pay a hundred thousand on principal, but, um, and we combine, or how are we gonna deal with debt service this year? Because last year, we paid the minimums in the operating budget, and we paid additional payments as a special article.
On the, uh, uh.
Free cash.
Free cash, right.
I mean.
So we should.
I'd still go with that.
Probably should do that again, but we gotta find out minimum payments.
Right.
Cause they're gonna be different. So, I would just email Sarah and ask, what are the minimum payments? It might even be on our ban.
So what did we do? We did the interest payment was the minimum payment and the.
The interest, there's a, there's an amount of principal that's, that's a minimum that takes power within a year or two.
Right.
I think the numbers we're looking at are the minimum payments from last year, because library minimum payment was that.
Yeah, that's what that is, that's, that's off of last year's warrant.
Yeah.
Three, three two oh eighty-five seventy-five?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
So. Yeah, Sarah will have to tell you what the, the minimum interest and principal payments are.
Is it time to drop the rescue vehicle? Because it wasn't on, yes, last year, and it's on this year, so why are we still carrying it?
Which, well, no, we're, but this year, we're gonna have to pay money on that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it's on there because it was coming on.
Well, we paid interest on it, we, we had to pay interest on it.
Uh. We, what, five thousand dollars was it, that's probably why you said that would be a hold.
Right.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
That whole debt service, we got to figure out.
Right.
So they can be all green. Berkshire County Retirement and Unemployment, seems like we have yet to have reasons for the numbers, health insurance.
I have a question about health insurance, cause it, I remember it's twelve point two one, but that's not what's showing up on here, so, hold?
Yep. I can show you one.
Okay.
Um, retired health insurance, hold. Life insurance three hundred, Medicare seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty.
Those, those two I still have to look at.
Bonds and insurance a hundred and one thousand.
And this is, this is just my math, figure out where I was off.
I'm trying to console myself, remembering that last year, the, that number, break this all out, but it ended up a very different number again.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to remind myself of that since.
That's what we do.
I know, I know. It is what we do. So are we gonna start talking about them now?
Yeah.
Should we just go to the top?
So the, last year, the budget, I missed the total.
Well, the total's a little off, cause I've.
Six million sixty-five thousand comes to my mind, was the total approved appropriation budget?
Well, that, there was, so this is, this is what the, uh, we approved of, about five million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's what was on the warrant. But I know there was, I saw that two, six million dollars, is what was appropriated minus the revenue.
Right, yeah, you saw what I wrote on my thing, on the.
Yeah, it's already done today, too.
Yeah, so, the budget, the operating budget that we voted on last year was five million four hundred and thirty-six thousand. And a few dollars.
And then there's all the special articles, that's the six million.
Yeah, so yeah, so it was five million, yeah, so it's like this, these, these numbers down here is where I'm trying to figure out where I am.
Now, I got, I got six million sixty-six thousand.
But we can't put them.
I got it off the state report, I got it off of the.
There was a state, I did see that too.
Tax recap.
The tax recap shows that. The six million. I was, I was just looking at it today.
We haven't put anything in stabilization fund in a while either.
It's a little.
I mean, we don't get a lot out.
Okay, so, why don't we just start at the top? Some of them are gonna be thirty seconds of a simple question, some of them are, are gonna be a much longer discussion than we have time for tonight, so let's see what we can do and at least just start talking about some of these things, so, office assistant wages, I put a hold on, um.
And that number comes because of the, uh.
I just want, uh.
Three percent COLA, right?
Yeah. Cause we combined the two.
Yeah, yeah, but I just want, I just want Roger, basically you, to think about, is this during amount of hours? You know, now that we actually have the role filled.
Yep.
And we're actually using that to pay two people right now, because it was unfilled happy, but, um, maybe, what it, what is it budget for, fourteen hours?
Fourteen hours.
So maybe if we go above twenty, that's a huge threshold of, of healthcare, but, um.
But maybe not just two people?
Well, I, I think we'll end up with one person.
Okay.
For, for that position, um, fourteen hours, you know, I think, um.
Well, the one person, by the way, was, was temporary, so that position was, is set to expire, but I didn't know. This has just been an ongoing discussion for years now, but now we're actually have someone in the role, so I just want to leave that discussion open. To fit the need.
It's kind of hard right now, to be honest.
It's, it's a few weeks into it.
Yeah, a few weeks into it, and, uh, you know, I've been working with Annabelle, and it's a lot like trying to figure out what I have to show Annabelle what to do, and then to find things for Annabelle. Yeah, a few weeks into it and, uh, you know, I've been working with Annabelle and it's a lot like trying to figure out what I have to show Annabelle what to do and then to find things for Annabelle. To work on consistently projects, what sort of things. I still have to work on possibly getting, uh, you know, some other licensing to help. Get into like the accounting system to see what's going on, where I can, you know, give a task and that sort of stuff, so. I think that fourteen is a good place right now, because I, I, um, I think that. You know, I, I think it's a good place to be, so there, because I think there's days, you know, right, right now, um, Annabelle's working Monday through Thursday. Uh, you know, nine to twelve-thirty, so that's what a fourteen hours is. Um, and I think that as we sort of move into the, into the, into the fiscal year, she might end up working additional, like not additional, but. Different hours based on meetings, say for example, we'd like to have her start doing minutes for, like that, like you're having to start doing minutes for the select board. Then those are sort of a different shift in hours and I think we should get through the first year, kind of see how that works.
Yeah.
And then.
Do it for the year.
For the year, and then as we get towards the next, next budget season, we can look and see what, um, what that looks like. Because you, you know, if it is, it's all of a sudden. It turns into what, you know, a twenty, twenty-five hour a week job, it has other kinds of, of ramifications.
But do, do you wanna put in a block of hours like we're doing for town elects, you know, the, it, there's some.
Oh, swing hours.
Swing hours. Have a block of hours in there that would be part of the project, you, you know, that. So we could do it, doesn't mean you could stick with the fourteen.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice to know that you had X amount of hours that you could say, okay, you could do this project, or you can get training in this.
Or go to a training.
Or go to a training.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's, that's a good idea.
You know, I, that's to be alive, you could say, we, I, I don't know.
Well, let's not settle it tonight, let's leave it.
Right, but think about it.
Yeah, you know, I'm hold and think about it and think about what might make sense. And like you said, probably in general, try it out for six months, it's hard to comment weeks into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially when there's so much training involved at this, this juncture.
Yeah. But I think maybe fifty floating hours or something.
Yeah.
Might be good.
Yeah, because it's really, it's really the, um. The, the issue has to, uh, you know, to get into things like, uh, retirement or healthcare, it's really like inconsistent hours and so it's kind of. Between fourteen and, and, you know, nineteen hours over the course of, of a year, I think that, that, you're, I think it might be good to have this kind of.
You have a lot of hours that you wanna do something.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, reserve fund, thirty thousand.
That was you, Steve?
Steve? Did you, you, you mentioned something about the reserve fund? You wanted to hold on the reserve?
Oh, I'm sorry, so that number hasn't changed and. It's always there for the company. So, uh, I'm wondering. It seemed like it was a kitchen last year.
We pretty much used, uh, um. Let me see if I can find it.
Um. Steve, my sense from the last couple of years, we've had different finance committees, we'd had different select boards. With different levels of toleration for what could be. Interdepartmental transfers and sometimes when we could have done interdepartmental transfers, we just did reserve fund because it's simpler at the end of the year. So in some ways. You know, it's hard to look at last year and say, oh, we did, we spent twenty-nine, we almost ran out, when in reality. We had to end of year.
The rules changed even before I was a town accountant, where you can do interdepartmental.
In the last two months.
Transfers and who cares, it's all the fire department, fire department here, there. That's allowed now, so it kind of did away with a lot of. A lot of the need for reserve fund. But I, I wasn't sure what the history was of this being used.
Yeah, we, uh, we pretty much used all of them last year.
Yeah, I thought so, but anyway. Whereas we didn't, if we used it all up, we would have had an alternative to go, you could actually, I believe, you can go to another fire, the fire department is short.
You can go to police department.
Yeah, you can.
So I, I don't understand why, because they've made such a big deal on the law about never changing what the voters appropriated, but. It's like, except when you want to.
Or except when it's considered part of a similar service or something, maybe that's it, I don't know.
No, now we can do whatever.
That's my question.
We could do town hall office supplies and pay. The, uh, community center.
Oh, in the, in the last two months.
In the last two months.
Right.
Anytime, so I think it's probably, it's probably good.
I, I needed to hear it because I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Um, what's it again?
I, I came back and said, will you drop down, we had town administrator, what do you? I had to put that on there, I came back when.
But you had, did you want?
Town administrator.
You wanna talk about that one?
Yeah, because I think that we're looking at the fire chief. And I think that which the town administrator and other department heads, it's pretty, the numbers we're talking about is pretty significant.
Yeah.
And there's gotta be discussion, we highlighted, you know, I highlighted DPW head, police chief. And we need to have a conversation about it, you know, because the fire chief is, if we go with the poses up here and everybody else is, I'd definitely kind of love it. So we need to have that discussion.
Um, I'd say, do, do you think that the thing that Ryan mentioned yesterday? Is it going to?
Well, I think we should all.
I think we should all.
Okay.
We should just hold, no, no, make it part of the conversation.
Yeah, that, that's fine. It may be premature, but I just wanted to run it by you. Okay.
You're okay with reserve fund?
So we'll take the hold of reserve fund, if we're basically satisfied and that also, you know, at the end, we. I wouldn't go down on it, but. We, yeah. Um, accountant services and treasure services, I'd help because we have contracts with them.
Yeah, I gotta make sure the numbers are right.
Well, accountant. It, we gotta. There aren't right numbers, because it's, they're both one-year contracts. And there's no money specification passed June thirtieth for this reason. But. I'm not gonna reach out to them and ask if they wanna raise, but.
Yeah.
But it also helps to have, this is a.
What's that?
It can also help in negotiations to say, this is what the town approved.
But if, if we get in a place where they don't want. To.
Mm-hmm.
That amount of money to work for Monterey and that's what we, a company approved, then we'll be pretty rough and a hard place.
If you have to go find another accountant at the last minute, this is not, I think it's better to make those, have those conversations before you put a number on warrant.
The question though is, are we happy with that?
Well, that is another question, and I think it may not be a question of putting in a number and then toeing the line, but of having a conversation about whether we're happy.
And I'm not saying we are or we aren't.
No, I'm raising a question.
If we're not happy. Then in order to get a number for that line, it's not about talking to this town accountant, it's about talking to other potential town accountants. And see kind of where they are.
Of which there is a possibility based on previous experience. How do you feel about the town accountant?
Uh, I don't have a problem with the town accountant, I mean, if they answer questions, I think that, um. Um, I think that sometimes they put things, that they're asking me or. The town to do things that may in some other larger community be done by the accounting department, you know, that, that sort of stuff. Um, I think that kind of happens, so it's here and there.
I also think that with the accountant, we have been sometimes put on the back burner, especially when we lost our designated. Rep.
Yeah, yeah.
That wasn't.
Yeah.
The owner of the firm. And. One of the things that he's been really good about though is when we say, well, this is the contract and we need this from you.
No, he's.
Like with the timing.
I think if anything, we need to work. With them to.
Yeah.
Help get the services that we deserve.
And, and we just had, we, we just had a conversation about things like, for example, there were some processes that were sort of got, that got a little lack of the physical payroll and. That, that, but like, uh, when, uh, when invoices are due and all that, it got a little quirky, you know, I, just because it was. The, the, uh, he'd had new people come on, so we sat down, we had a conversation about it and, um, you know, just this past week, they went through. You know, just with myself, there was a situation that happened, they sent me the, uh, they went through the steps that we talked about, and it all just got worked out, we should have had it worked out. As opposed to getting an email at eleven o'clock on a Saturday or three o'clock on a Sunday, we're not doing that anymore, but it's just, it's just not happening.
That's very good.
Yeah, so I think there are situations like, for example, I think next year, um, before the end of the fiscal year. I need to have a conversation with him about making sure that they are looking at the town warrant when they start creating the budget.
That was a mess.
Because that was a huge mess, they just quite, they didn't quite go through looking at the town warrant, making sure that the. Current, the, the, the new fiscal year matched the town warrant.
Maybe we should have that conversation before that?
Yeah, well, that's what I.
Well, it's the kind of thing we really should have the town, but I.
No.
When we ask for better service, he's accommodating of it and sometimes we just need to be on them a little bit more because they need to do their job.
Right, because he's, I'm sorry, Frank.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, from doing the payables for a few months, it's a cumbersome process. And you would think on their end, if we could streamline that, it would benefit them.
Everybody.
And, and, and that, it's not a criticism, as our hourly wages go up, it's easier to justify software that will do it and there'd probably be less mistakes. I mean, it's a.
Yes and no, I mean, I've seen the automation of the time and attendance.
Yeah, but I, well, I, I can't speak to that, but I can tell you my experience with accounts payable, there's a lot better processes than we have there. You know, it's, you know, department heads could have a history, they could have a drop-down menu just for the people that they use versus looking through a five-page sheet, you know.
Time button right down.
Company code number, you know, and then you get a lot of the, you know, I think the, uh. The AT&T is like eleven-digit, you know, account number, you know, you put it in runtime and you check it all, you just, uh. It, it's a lot, it's a lot of manual work.
Well, how about not to get too far into the weeds?
Okay.
Can Roger go back to that account and treasure and ask about fees for next year?
I, I think so, yeah. I, I also think it may be worthwhile to, I don't know if they're still using Access. I know that I had a meeting with the former town administrator and the accountant and they were still, they were using the Access database that is.
My age.
It's, it's.
It's Frank's age. Uh, but it's.
Yeah, the, the software.
Software.
The software is using outdated. It's, it's. The town is using updated.
It was old soft, very old software. And security protection. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if they have any intention in what their timeline is of updating it, because that may address some of these issues if the software is not. And they couldn't pull reports that I was asking for back then, anyway, now I don't know about now, but back then, because it was really hard to get it out of the software. And I know that, that program from, well, decades ago.
This is not, I mean, Ken sure serves some big clients throughout the state.
Yeah, so they use Vadar, which isn't their software, it's a third party, that, uh, that is essentially kind of. It's not really like, uh, it's not really an online cloud-based application, it's really, it uses a Citrix front-end, so there's a whole bunch of other steps that, that it has to go through. It's not pretty, it definitely has.
Yeah, but it, I mean, what version do they have of the software, do, do they have the newest one or is it?
Well, I don't, no, I have to go look and see what Vadar has as a, as, I don't know, I don't believe Vadar. I'm familiar with it, but I don't believe Vadar has a true cloud, true cloud.
The accounting software is always an annual expense, right?
It is, yeah. Speaking of, I think we should move on to the next line. As long as, if there's no questions about the accountant services and treasure services, which really we need to get numbers on.
Right.
Um, we'll move to town accountant expenses. So that's up a lot. Is that the budget software?
No, that's the audit, and we were putting the audit in the, in, in it now.
Oh, I didn't realize we're putting that in town accountant expenses.
It is in town accountant expenses, it was always separated out from it.
Yeah.
It was.
It was always, uh, uh. So it was made, so it's part of town accountant expenses, but it had been separated out in the warrants historically.
Is it separate?
Yeah. I know, and I didn't know, I, I just, if that's what you want to do, I can do that, but I just made town, town expenses.
I think for a long time, we were giving, it was, it was one of those same.
There was just.
It was a special, it was a warrant, it was a separate article for years, and then we brought it in because we said we were gonna do it every year. And at this point, that, I mean, that made sense at the time, but it came in as a separate line. At some point, you have to accept that it's part of it.
Same thing was just.
Yeah, but, but Roger, it's part of that line.
It was a separate line in the operating budget, right?
No.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't.
Go to last year's town meeting minutes.
That, that's different, the warrant is different than the budget.
But what we're gonna need to do here at the end of the day is take this and put it in a warrant.
I know. So put it in the sp, in the expenses.
That's fine, I like the proposal, but I'm just saying, as far as.
It, it's.
Your numbers are concerned, as far as your numbers are concerned, that's gonna be one of the reasons that they're not gonna match up with last year's town meeting.
No, because it's all, because it's all included.
He just rolled them both into a bottom line.
That might not want to, in a sense.
The bottom line will match up, but, uh. So like here, one, one thirty-five. Line one thirty-five annual audit was for seventeen thousand, five hundred, gas B seventy-five was twenty-seven fifty.
And no, those are, those are, those are line items within the town.
Yeah.
And you popped it, what you did with, that's the, that's the cost of the item, right?
Yeah.
The revisions, right?
So. So what about gas B seventy-five?
It's in there as well. I know, I can't, I can't share, I, I can't.
Oh, you know what, Roger, you know why I was all confused, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go back to the budget. When it says seventeen thousand, seven fifty.
That's the revision.
I took that as the difference between this year and last year.
Yeah, but some reason it's not, that, anyway, it's not doing the math.
You see, it's way over on the right, the difference, so what is it between this year and last year?
Um. Well.
It's, it go way to the right.
It shows it at one sixty-two.
Hundred and sixty-one, hundred and sixty-two percent.
But it isn't really.
Not really.
Because you combined two lines, that's fine.
I combined two lines and we put seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars into the, into it, into that.
Right.
For, um.
The, the audit.
For the audit. Because remember we put a thousand dollars?
Yeah, so that's fine, so all we did, just for clarity, is we're combining lines, so one way we might just. Uh, note that to avoid confusion is right, town accountant.
Expenses.
Expenses combined and then combined accountant slash treasure software, annual audit and gas B seventy-five all into one line. So usually whenever we do that between years on town meeting, it actually shows up on the warrant.
At, at zero.
In parentheses.
Right.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, so in, in a parentheses, what, what is it?
Yeah.
Because here, no, I mean, it's right, uh.
In the warrant.
Right, so it shows up that the, the lines you combine show up at zero with a notation that they've been doing the other way, yeah.
So, so for, right, just, so you, so we're all looking at the same thing, right?
What is it on B seventy-five?
We have to do it.
No, but what is it?
It's a pension.
Okay.
So for example, accountant actuarial analysis of health. So, so the accountant department is one thirty-five, so in the accountant department are these for. Sub, subcategorizing issue to call if it's broken up, so it's, it's, it's within that, it's within the account of the, of the.
That's helpful for us, but when we, when we put it up at town meeting. People don't know that.
Yeah.
Mickey will stand at a town meeting and say, why is it up this huge percent?
About Mickey.
And so what we should probably do.
I can say like list out.
We don't need to figure it out right now, but.
We just hit the end of themselves.
Yeah.
Show what they were this year and then show them the zero.
Yeah.
Next year and then, then, then you can figure it out.
Right, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Okay.
What's up there?
Assessors clerk wages. There was a request for that to go up, right?
Assessors clerk?
Yeah.
And it's flat too, it's not even three percent.
Not the assessors clerk. Yeah, you gotta go figure out why that's not, why that's not.
I think part of the reason it might be flat is because I thought we have to have Don Clausen, but I thought we talked about maybe uh, raising that by different.
Look, cause I don't, I don't have books.
I might be getting confused with last year.
And that's weird because the clerk is showing up there at three.
Yeah, I know, I have to come over here and for some reason I did.
Oh wait, go back to that, um, go back to that little spreadsheet that you were just on.
Really?
He's just had a screen that's doing it.
Roger, at some point, go back to the assessor request and look in the notes. And I think that was about last year.
Yeah, this is FY twenty-four.
But. So I just wonder where it puts us now.
Um, I have to go.
FY twenty-four was the twenty eighty-seven plus twenty-four holidays.
Yeah.
Which you and I both think that there shouldn't be money for holidays.
No.
Because you either work or you get paid to not work.
Like, I have to go back through and turn and, I'll, I'll go back through and do the math on that, do that out. Cause I think, uh, for FY twenty-five for holidays. So that, that, that's why I think that number is high.
Well, we just gotta figure it out.
Yeah, I'll just go, I'll, I'll work on it, figure it out.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that was a, uh, what was that again? That was.
I'm assessing.
Frank will figure it out. Put Frank to work. And I mean, here's another thing. I mean, we're talking now. I don't, I don't know where we landed, but when it came up with the community center, you know, and I think there was this question of salary parity and that's probably why there was the raise, raise request last year. We don't wanna penalize people who worked for the town for a long time.
Right.
So maybe that factors in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go see what it worked.
To the, uh, equation. Okay, so I think we're down to human resources consulting.
Um, no, we, we wanted to see assessor's expenses. Somebody mentioned that.
You're going down with the one.
We went to assessors, assessors clerk wages.
Oh, sorry.
That might have been me.
That's actually gonna go up a tiny little bit because, uh,
Yeah.
Because, uh, um, I just got, I just got the, um, I, I, I did voice a quote from Don for some additional licensing. So that's actually gonna go up.
Okay, so I know why I was wondering, because last year the expenses were super high because of the revow.
Yes.
Yes.
Cause the revow is done.
Yes.
So I would have expected it would have gone down this year appreciably because they were
Let's go.
appreciably higher last year and yet in fact they're going up even more. That's confusing.
So. There's your revow dollars. So, yeah, the.
Software licenses and agreements?
Yeah, so that's actually gonna go up a little bit.
It's a little bit?
Well, that's a lot of it.
That's kind of, this, this is what, this is what the value was. But yeah, it went up, it went up from the thirteen thousand.
Is this because we're upgrading the new software and deploying the cloud?
Yep, so he's got the AP camera software, AP cloud.
Right.
This also doesn't, uh, this, there's, um, some additional licensing that has, that, uh, he's getting in here. Two, he's getting two additional licenses. He actually brought the, the price down a little bit.
Or what's it, does he get two more seats or?
He's getting two, he's getting two more additional, he's getting two additional licenses at the end of the day. I think he'll have four, I think he said.
I think so, at least some of it involved being able to put it on his, on the mobile.
I think with some of the software is.
Work with the software while onsite.
You know, sometimes you get software and it's, um, you know, you buy like licenses, you might buy four licenses. This is actually, instead of the four licenses, uh, as a user license, these licenses are device, they're associated to the device. So they gotta have a IP address to get it. So those are, those are the things that he's, he's, uh, dealing with.
Did you address Susan's question about the revow?
Uh, so the revow, I think the revow was, uh.
Can you go up to a little bit so we can see what the headings are?
Yeah, so.
What was last year's request?
So last year's request was ninety, it was thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight.
No, no, for the five year revow consultant. It was zero?
It's, it's right here.
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Wait, go up. No, you're looking at the wrong amount.
Oh, that's the wrong company.
That's the lar, the most amount that was spent in the last three years. So.
So the revow was in FY twenty-four, was in fourteen thousand five hundred, yeah. So at that point in time, there was some other.
Right, right, okay.
So is it software licenses and agreements that's largely responsible for this?
Yeah, because they're one of the.
Yeah.
So it's not the revow.
Okay, so it's not the revow. Great, I had the wrong year. Okay.
This, this goes back to when we had the discussion if we should get rid of the town server and go all on the cloud. We all want one cloud anyway, it's more secure.
Yeah.
And more, uh, redundant.
Yep. Backups.
But it's cost money. It's more redundant in the budget too.
So eventually, well, eventually.
The server was gonna cost a bunch of money too, so.
And so the lack of security.
Yeah.
Okay, so where were we? Assessors expenses. Thanks for catching that. Treasurer service, Roger, you're gonna talk to Sarah.
Yeah.
HR consulting, eleven thousand. So I might put a hold on that.
I think I, no, I put a hold on that because I'm not certain we're using that, um, the, those, that full eleven thousand dollars. I think if we were talking about using, uh, you know, giving the, um, uh, the administrative assistants some floating hours, I think that's where that should come from because I don't, I don't think we'd use five or six thousand dollars.
It's hard, it's like town council, right?
Exactly.
If you wanna be able to use them when you need them.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna go crazy over budget. Part of the problem is their invoices come about six months too late.
So.
Oh, eight and six months.
We might, we might, we might pick it Tuesday for this.
So maybe we leave it green and just, can you try to look at what invoices we have? I mean, I'm, I think five thousand might be a maintenance amount.
I was thinking about that too.
Um.
Do we have a, a line that's, and I, I know there are funds, but like an unanticipated expenses line?
The, the general reserve fund.
Yeah, well, that reserve fund can only go to an existing line.
But can we have a, like a line?
A slush fund?
I don't mean it as a slush fund, but I know a lot of budgets will say, you know, stuff happens over the year that we don't, that we can't anticipate. But we wanna put five grand, I'm just picking a number. We wanna put five grand in this line here. We're not handing the budget. We're putting five grand or whatever the number is in this line here for things that are unanticipated that, that come up, that don't necessarily require a town meeting.
So life board expenses.
Oh, so that's what we're in Costa Rica.
No, but what's the life board expenses? It's like.
Five K.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand and most of it's discretionary. But when someone offers to donate us a piece of land and it's gonna cost us five hundred dollars to negotiate the deed or something. That's the select for expenses. So that's, we use it.
Yeah.
We have a little bit of flexibility.
Well, that's the line. There's a lot of organizations that will do that. Not even not-for-profits will do that. And they'll have a line that's for stuff we can't plan it, but at least we know where there's some money there. If the budget is completely zeroed out in a sense appropriately, because we hit it a hundred percent accuracy.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, of course not, but if we've hit it a hundred, we still know that we've got money if something else comes up.
Yeah.
Without having to appropriate it from, you know, have a photo on it.
So. Next up is broadband services and IP. And I think Roger, we kind of talked about.
Yeah.
We should pay broadband out of the IT budget.
Yes, yeah, so I, I was kind of, wasn't thinking right when I was doing the invoices, so I'm gonna start like the fiber connect would be, I have to change that when we come out of that.
Well, what if we just combine it? I mean.
Well, I was, this is actually one thing that, um, will end up being combined because it's all expenses.
Yeah.
For that, so it'll be IT expenses and it'll show up technically as thirty thousand dollars, which I think I might be able to lower some costs on that as well.
Well, I think looking at this budget, I hope that's an area that could be cut and you would know as well. You would know better than anyone where, but we've, we've basically instead of having a, a replacement plan, we budgeted four thousand dollars for IT for years and years and years and everything went outdated. And we've done a couple of years of big heavy spending, but can we go back down to a?
Uh, I'll, I'll take a look and see where it's at.
Maybe somewhere between four and forty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Between four and thirty.
Thirty, forty, thirty, yes.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Leave a hold on it, combine it, do that. Town clerk wages, I put a hold on because we got burned really bad this year for not having an assistant town clerk at the ready. And, uh, I don't know if we'll find somebody, but I can't in good conscience pose a budget without some amount of money for some kind of an assistant. And maybe that's not a separate line. Maybe it's within town clerk wages. And maybe we know that a thousand dollars is in there to pay an assistant. But we can't do the not having an assistant thing.
Which was the case for a long time.
There was.
Well, until recently, we never had an assistant.
Well, we got burnt, well, we. We went through periods.
Think so, not.
Where Gary was.
Not before.
He was an administrator.
I think the assistant only occurred during Terry's tenure. I don't believe there was an assistant prior to her.
And I know, I know there's a Gary.
Always had lived before as our assistant, she was very. Did she? Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't think, so I got, uh, railed by the elections division.
No, I know, I, I.
When I was on the phone with them after the election, they said, well, we hired this temporary guy. And they said, well, who's counting the ballots that are coming in through the mail? And Roger was accepting them and stamping them, but they were like, why don't you have an assistant? And I said, you know, frankly, it was very hard to find one town clerk, let alone an assistant. But it was months of dealing with cleanup of different items. And even if the person, maybe it comes to the important election and the town clerk disappears to Alaska.
Right.
And our assistant can't handle it, but at least we tried.
Okay.
I think, I think we just can't have an election. I think we'd be a little hard pressed. I don't, I wouldn't say hard pressed, but I, I think we really have to think about how to schedule an actual assistant town clerk.
No, 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 you're not, you're, no, I didn't explain it well. I'm saying you put a thousand dollars in there and you pay that there. The town clerk appoints an assistant town clerk. They come for elections, whatever.
Oh, I get.
I'm not saying that they're in there ten hours a week.
I get you.
You just have a little bit more than the, than the.
Yeah, but.
They're not a position.
They know where they are. So, so, so you're like, so those specific things that we would need them for, like elections.
Well, like when we started Gary, right? When we started Gary after
Yeah.
we had got him as assistant town clerk, it wasn't even a full schedule and that was even when we had no town clerk at all. But someone as backup because they're the, if the town clerk appoints an assistant town clerk, the assistant town clerk can do anything and everything that the full town clerk can do in their absence. If we don't have that, then the select for, I mean, we saw the mess.
Right.
We saw the mess. So I don't know who that person is and how that position is filled, but I think it's due diligence for the town to have somebody in that role and we could do it as an unfunded position. But I just think in this day and age, unfunded positions are not reliable.
I guess we could, we could treat it like they do the building inspector. There's the alternate buildings.
Yeah, and it's a small line of like a thousand dollars. And I think, I just think that that's what I would do. I don't think we can in good conscience not have an assistant. And the other option would be to have an unfunded, entirely unfunded. And I'm not saying to make a big budget, I'm just saying, you know, in this day and age to have a thousand dollars.
Would it make sense, just for transparency, for that to be a separate line?
I would think so, yeah, we could do that as opposed to having.
And I am not in any way opposed, I'm just gonna ask the question, if, if we're gonna do that and I see your logic behind it, I do not oppose. Does it make sense to have a plan for what that will be? I mean, to just put a thousand dollars because we made up the number. I mean, do we, do we wanna think about what would be that hourly wage be at this point? Like what will we paying the assistant town clerk that we just had? And how many hours do we think if we needed that person, who would we pay them for? Because we could just transfer money from one line to the other or whatever. Um, but at the end of the day, I'd rather put a number that I have some feeling like we put some thought into it than just say, oh, let's just throw a thousand dollars.
Well, I'll tell you where it comes from. So here, here's what you do, right? Anytime that the town clerk is on vacation, the assistant town clerk can come in. That's, you don't know how many times that will be in, in a year, but maybe it's, it's five times, so twenty bucks an hour, super roughly a hundred dollars right there.
Right.
But also this person would probably be the right hand person to the town clerk if they're available for elections, town meetings, checking people in. We have separate election workers wages.
Right.
Um, but.
Okay.
The, I think you would probably keep them on the periphery of the town's clerk's office enough to keep them involved.
Right.
Um.
That was, I'm thinking training. I mean, it's, it's wonderful to have somebody on call, but there are certain things, I don't know a lot about the town clerk's position, but there are needs to understand your way around a computer or whatever it is, the voter registration and all that stuff. So there must be some training. So if you wanna have someone backup, you just can't say, okay, we, we call you, we're, yeah, what are you gonna do? Sit in the chair.
Well, it was invaluable though, Steve, I will say, it was invaluable to have Gary, once we got him appointed an official as the assistant, because even if you have someone without ability to do census and dog license, they can come in and swear your concomitant and, I mean, they were, we were just backed up for this. I'm not gonna call them the silliest things, but for the smallest things that you or I could give an oath to somebody. We don't need extensive training, but if you don't have an assistant town clerk, no one can do it.
Yeah, the other thing is Amanda, who we hired, she was the assistant town clerk in Swinfield. So Roger can talk to her, what does this look like? What would you train someone to do? In the event something happens to you.
They have a different setup where the assistant town clerk is much more involved.
Well, they do. Well, I grant you, yeah, that's good, but I mean, at least we can give a sense of we put X amount of dollars to it. You know, s, yeah, they basically, for two people, part of the time to do that, kind of first, send them back right from the man.
Okay, so, uh, we'll leave that flag and try to think of how exactly we want to structure and what, and what amount we want it to be. And maybe that's a conversation with Amanda too, Roger, but. You know, and ideally you find someone who might even be a town clerk in another town.
Which makes it harder than to come on election day unless it's just town line.
Yeah, but at least it can come in a pinch and swear somebody in, yeah. Try also something important.
Can I just ask about how late we're going?
Um, we're almost done with this section here.
We would finish the section.
What if we finish the section?
Eleven o'clock.
Finish the section?
Fine.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, finish the section.
Okay.
Um, cause the next section I think might be a longer conversation.
You wanna go over there to speed there?
No.
So a line on. Election order wages and election expenses, I think they're level funded and we gotta talk to Amanda, but I'm fairly certain they can go down because last year was a big election.
I, I was talking to Amanda today. I sent, I just sent her the, uh, the budget today. So I'm gonna talk to her this week. She's back on Thursday and Friday. So, cause I asked her, I think there's one election next year, I think it's a primary or something next year. I have to ask her. She, she's gonna look, look. There's midterm yet, so there's things coming up. I don't think there's like five.
Well, the primary falls in the beginning of the year and then the main election will be there.
Fiscal, what's the, how would it split over the fiscal year now?
This is twenty, this is twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-six, there'd be a primary in the spring and a midterm election in the fall.
So only the primary would be part of this budget. And we'll have the town election.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think it'll be, well, I'll, I'll talk to her about it.
Yeah, those numbers will come down.
Yeah.
And then agent wages.
Well.
There are a new agent and a new wage.
And a new wage and a lower wage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, um, like significantly lower. In what we were paying, because she's not really an agent, that she's not, she's really.
Doesn't have the same.
Cause I say qualifications, she's, she's administrative primarily right now.
So we had to figure out with Concom what works, because I know they're also talking about she's, she's interested and I think actively training.
Yeah.
So they're talking about potentially doing a raise.
Maybe.
Based on completing trainings. Um, which, so we wanna leave enough room for that, but it probably shouldn't be that high because Um, which, so we wanna leave enough room for that, but it probably shouldn't be that high because it could vary differently, which could come down. That was it, that's the one hundreds.
Woo-hoo!
That wasn't.
Oh, was that, was that okay?
I thought, I thought.
Did it work out right?
I'm with what you set up there. I'm with that.
Yep.
Yeah, you did a great job. I, you know, I felt bad you restricted us from printing it, you restricted us.
Jesus. We can't print it?
No.
Can I copy and paste it?
No.
No, you can't.
Well, I don't think copy and paste or nothing.
Well, you can't, I tried.
I need to, I need to get it in a, I need to be able to edit it, not edit it, I need to copy it.
What?
No, 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 not if you're rolling the chair. Not if you're rolling the chair.
Next thing you know, it's like, whose, whose budget is this now? Who, who put this stuff in?
I just need a copy, one copy of it. I don't need access to it, I just need a copy of it.
All right, I think I can.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna back, put it into last year's budget spreadsheet. And just for my own clarity.
Okay.
Because, you know, one year, was it last year, two years ago, we worked on the budget all budget season. And then we went to adding up the numbers and then it was like.
It was so crazy.
There was a, you add, someone added a line in the spreadsheet. And sometimes when you add a line, it gets included into the calculation and sometimes it doesn't. So there was a missing like forty thousand dollars. So that's what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna double.
Can I, can I just tell you that this is.
Don't give your, your.
The fire department budget thing that like, I, like every time I would add something, I would expect that all the forty lay would work and then they didn't and it's such a nightmare.
Are, are we meeting next week?
Yeah.
Is it the same day? Same day, same time?
Yeah.
Roger, can you?
That.
Well, the other thing, you know, I know that Susan and I talked about having another select board meeting and finance meeting next Monday to continue to discuss the.
I have two meetings next week?
Is there a COA next, next week?
To discuss the fire. Cause there's a lot of, there's a part she had meeting, I got questions.
We started earlier, cause I have a seven o'clock other meeting I have.
What time?
I, I, uh, what time? Monday.
I was thinking ten on Monday.
It was, oh, in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, I actually do that on Monday at ten.
Yeah, cause we're, we're, I mean, Sue, I haven't talked to her, we talked for two hours yesterday.
Yeah.
I mean, and she can get into more detail, get into more detail what I am doing.
We learned a lot today at that meeting.
Roger, but I'm also hoping by Monday that I will take the official fire report and have it in an Excel spreadsheet. So we can work out.
The number, the, the numbers from all year, calls and events.
Well, one hundred eighty-five events, the times, the dates, who responded. So we can do data sort, you know, okay, if we had to leave out a shift, you know, you'll have information there because, you know, I just feel like I need to see more data because I still a proponent for doing it incrementally. You know, we can't just, I don't, you know, at this point, there's so many other budget issues that we do it incrementally. And to understand what the data is.
Yeah, you can't make the decision in the back.
In the back, then, we know there's a hundred and eighty-five events that they want to, okay, what were them? What time of day were they, the week, day, you know, day of the week? It's cumbersome because you gotta, I gotta read.
And what dates were they in? Quiet times, were they on vacation, visit times, you know, when all our, all our, uh, non-residents.
On a reported response to like what vehicles, but like if an ambulance comes from a, like I noticed there's, there was an Otis ambulance here and there was a Sandalfield, so try to get a.
It would, it would be great to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, try to, I'll have a comment, I've reached out to Southern Berkshire Ambulance to get their times on response.
That's right.
So it would, I wrote them an email the day I had.
To answer your question about, of course, there's a twenty thousand dollar.
Like whether it's a fire ambulance. Well, I got, I, I mean, it's so small. I've been given done this before, so I, I just don't feel like I have enough data to write the ghost of some.
So that's.
We gotta do some, I'm like, oh, I'm like.
Well, I'm in, I'm booking it up, I'm a twelve percent, twenty thousand dollars in there as well.
As a separate. So you took it up, and they added that on.
Good night. Do you wanna um, just do like a one or two line minutes tiling and discuss the budget?
We're gonna do.
Yeah.
Budgets, aren't we?
Oh, we discussed it.
Two percent increase.
Should we, uh, are we adjourned?
You guys. Are we adjourned? What time do you want? I'm flexible.
I'm flexible Monday also.
Yeah, I.
Oh, Susan, Susan, will eleven fifteen work for you on Monday?
Yeah, my, we, I think we also need to meet with the fire department.
We?
No, no.
They, you two.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe you meet with them at ten, if Steve can't make it till eleven fifteen.
Um, let me reach out to, um, reach out to them and find out when they tend.
Okay, and you put an email tomorrow. He's, he's.
I was thinking eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen, that works for me. So we adjourned at like seven twenty.
Sure.
Working here?
Okay.
Yeah, and then should we do it here or do it at the library or?
It was nice at the library, but here makes it easier for him to walk down the hall.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm sorry, so we're, should I?
We're gonna get, you're gonna get an email about.
Yeah, let me, let me check in with that fire chief and then.
Well, we're gonna shoot for eleven fifteen.
I'll shoot for eleven fifteen and.
All right, I'll move it to that so I don't mess up.
Okay.
And then if the.
Yeah.
The most reliable source is the calendar on the town website. Because if it's, if that's wrong, then you can't legally meet. So you have to.
Right.
You know what I do when I post the agenda? I, I don't use the draft agenda that I copied into it to make my notes for the meeting, I take it off of the calendar. Even though I just copied it into.
So you know it's the same.
I know that's the same, that everyone else has access to.
So the most important question is how's your wife feeling?
She's good, she's good, yeah.
What's the due date?
June, June eleventh.
So she still has a while. She still has a while.
Oh yeah, I won't be at town meeting.
Hey, Susan, mine's gonna be out of town too.
Oh my god.
We're all gonna be out of town. We're all going out of town. We're going to Costa Rica.
I'll sit up there with the dunks, yeah.
Good night, everybody.
So gentlemen, are you okay in principle with the town administrator and the fire chief, meeting with town administrator and fire chiefs of the towns?
Yeah.
Having conversations about the possibility?
Yeah.
Going forward with that? I mean, it's very, it's just a preliminary conversation, not binding, but I think it's a really good idea.
The other thing I would suggest to town administrator and the fire chief too, is look at what these other towns are paying, so not competing against.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We're, we're, you know, they need the, you know, I, I don't wanna get into price deals with them, but I think it's just that we're doing each other a justice.
Well, honestly, one of the other things that's.
Yeah, I, I was.
It's on me if we should go with daytime on which.
Yeah.
We'll be in three departments, starting on daytime, looking for daytime all the person, actually, and we'll talk about being a direct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out all the steps to get there.
So I agree, my, stopper, stopper, man, always like the heavenly departments.
Where that comes from. Well, we got two. I, I understand the concern. That's where I just started the whole, actually means.
War. And hope the best, I don't know. Anyway, we gotta get that far.
It's, it, it's gonna be a problem. And if it's.
I thought it was really interesting that.
Special articles.
Share CPW, I mean, I know there's been a history.
All this stuff.
You can talk about, I'm definitely great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what do you think about that idea?
I think it's interesting, I think it's.
Okay, for two minutes, we go.
You know, I didn't wanna say something because I, I, I looked at the turn of my eye and Lynn Suburski was up there.
Yeah.
And I forgot, cause we got into the budget, she's kinda there, then she left. But um, they have serious concerns about the um, the um, the money that we're, they're having to pay to Great Barrington for the ridership.
I saw her.
Yeah.
It's gone up to twelve thousand dollars. So they're, they're like in no position to pay it and they, they're, they're not gonna go out and get a grant to spend for twelve thousand dollars when they're using this grant that is supposed to be used for lots of things. And it's all going towards ridership, when the ridership itself is including more than just seniors and disabled.
From the sound of it, a lot more.
Well, what if they portion out and they say we'll pay the senior part?
Well, that's what I have to call, I have to talk to Chris here at, in the Great Barrington to ask him how this is all gonna work. Because, because we could theoretically, they could pay a portion of it and then the town could cough up the rest of it.
It's all the town though.
Well, except they get a grant.
Yeah.
And so they get a grant, which comes from the state, which they don't wanna spend one hundred percent of the grant on ridership.
How big is the grant?
Uh, it's gone from four to, I think it was like seven thousand dollars this past year.
So what if they negotiate and say we'll give you our whole grant and nothing more?
They don't wanna use the grant.
I think they wanna be able to use the grant for other programs, because it's supposed to cover like everything, anything. But this would be going from using part of it for that to using all of it for that.
Yeah, and they're pretty much using all of it for, for it right now. And they're, they're not happy. And plus they're not getting the kind of information from, from Great Barrington they were hoping, you know, like they, they, they used to get like the names of the writers and all this sort of stuff and kinds of information, and the information they're just not getting anymore.
But where do they get the grant from? So Berkshire.
The state, I think they actually get the cultural council, some of the.
It's not through the Berkshire.
No, no, it's from the state, it's from the state council on aging, cultural councils of that way, so, but anyway.
I think they run like the tri-town connector, but this is not, this is a different, yeah.
So anyway, I saw her and I totally forgot to acknowledge her, I'm sorry, but I'll reach out tomorrow, I don't know if it's.
Okay, I'm looking at the minutes of February twenty-fifth and I'm first looking at Susan's edits.
I sent them to mine. I went ahead and one where I screwed up.
Yeah, I think I deleted an S.
Yeah, I look at, everything looks good to me.
I'm second emotion.
No, I'm looking at Frank's edition, Frank's edition.
You know, I said that I screwed up on my calculations.
Of what?
Well, you can't, that's what you said at the time, you can't change it, it's no fact, though.
I, I know, but I, we talked about, yeah, I did it at a one point five, you said it's gotta be at a two point five. For the.
Although, as of, as of yesterday, I'm gonna say a two. Instead of two point five.